Fifteenth, 2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber, as well as an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
First order of business is the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First, we have items A and B. A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. B being a call for a meeting set Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, as day for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion of second? Motion by Rogers.
Second.
Second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll go into our resolutions, Resolutions C through E. Do I have a motion of second plus adjournment?
No.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Was there anybody here that wanted to speak on the resolutions for equalization? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That concludes Board of Equalization. We will now go into the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Fahy, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item is Item One, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. Do I have a motion of second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We will now go into Item Two, report from the Director of Corrections. Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you my report for March of 2025. Turning to enclosure number one, Administrative Services and Personnel. Following the ninth month of the fiscal year, we were $1,267,995 under budget. That is a good sign heading into the closing stretch of our fiscal year. $340,403 were spent on overtime costs. This is an increase. It is driven by some ongoing personnel matters and adding an additional security checkpoint. Over $1 million in bond payments were processed by our records division. Eleven officers below the rank of sergeant and one sergeant left employment in March. This includes one retirement. Congratulations to Wade Stephens Jr. on his retirement. Four officers were promoted from CO1 to CO2. And as of March 31st, we were 99% staffed among all correctional officer ranks. We actually did have a class of 26 cadets begin their academy yesterday, so that'll put us back on track for our staffing and should carry us through the summer months when we have an increased amount of time off for vacations and et cetera. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of 11 individuals in community corrections and saved a combined 53 bed days in the jail. Work release admitted 24 individuals. House arrest admitted 53. The Reentry Assistance Program admitted, sorry, turned the page too fast, 22. Turning to Reentry Services and Therapeutic Communities in the jail, 60 individuals, excuse me, were admitted to therapeutic community housing units. There are currently 107 individuals on the GED waitlist with 72 active students. Five individuals achieved a GED. And I'm going to divert from my usual report for a moment. I do have some guests. I want to highlight our educational endeavors that we promote at the Department of Corrections. We recently had two graduations, one for those in community corrections and one for those who are incarcerated in the jail. I have a program here and it lists, not everybody is able to come or available to come to these graduations, but I'm very proud of the fact that our GED program produced 36 graduates in the past year. I believe that probably makes us larger than several high schools in the state of Nebraska in terms of people earning their high school diplomas. So with that, I'm going to bring in, bring up Heather Robinson, and we have a couple of guests after her to talk a little bit more about our educational programs at Corrections.
Hi, my name's Heather Robinson, and I'm the Educational and Vocational Supervisor for Douglas County Corrections. And I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that we offer academic and job training-wise. So our GED program, in order to successfully complete, you have to pass four exams. At any given time in Douglas County, there are 16% to 20% of the population that has not successfully graduated or earned their GED previously. Of those, we have about 50% of our clients who haven't graduated under the age of 21 who qualify for special education services. We average somewhere between three to five GED graduates per month, depending upon how many clients we have in total. We also operate a Google Classroom, so for those students who are either on house arrest or at home and coming into the work release center to do classes, it's not super convenient to them or works with their schedule because life is busy, they can participate in the Google Classroom, so they can have access to their instructors, they can have homework, they can have notes. We also offer two vocational classes within the jail and also within work release and the Community Justice Center. Those would be electrical safety, so they can get an electrical safety certification, they can also get forklift certified. We offer each class twice a month on Mondays. We have a collaboration between a couple of community partners to offer additional tutoring services, specifically the Trio Program with Creighton University. They are currently looking for new tutors to come in to help with the evenings. We operate a writing group one day a week, so the writing group is for people to practice reading poetry, writing poetry, do a bit of creative writing. We also do some writing of autobiographies. They also do some artistry, so some drawing. We also started a book club that begins this week, so they approached me about once a week, could we meet, could we read a chapter of a book and then discuss it? So I'm really excited to see where that goes from there. We do a special education collaboration. So like I said, there is a significant portion of our students under the age of 21 who qualify for special education services. So we have partnered with Millard Public School District, La Vista, and OPS to provide services to those students. So once they're identified, we update their IEPs and then they get those services in addition to the GED services. So I'm going to introduce Karen Shelton, who is the GED teacher over at the Criminal Justice Center.
Hi, my name is Karen Shelton, and I'm the Educational and Vocational Specialist at the Reentry Assistance Program and Work Release. And I want to share to you guys how powerful the GED program truly is. Many of our students come in facing serious challenges such as addiction, broken relationships, and a place in life that they don't even know where to start to fix things. This is so much more than just teaching academics. Each student is different, and I have to learn how to motivate and support them in ways that works for them. It's a deeply personal journey, and rewarding isn't even a big enough word for seeing them start to believe in themselves again. When they pass that first test, the change I often see is hard to put into words. I see a shift. I see hope and confidence that wasn't there before. That one step forward leads to so much more. Today, I'm proud to introduce one of my former students and GED graduates, Jonathan Bowles and his mother, Jan Bowles, and they're here to share their story and the impact this journey has had on both of them.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Bowles. I'm an alcoholic and a drug addict. From the time I was 16, I've always been a heavy drinker. Other than that, I've lived a pretty normal life. I started my own business when I was 18. I got married on my 20th birthday, but then 11 years and two beautiful sons later, we went through divorce. Shortly after our divorce, my drinking escalated to the point where I lost my business, I lost our home, and eventually I lost my freedom. When I was incarcerated for four months due to my second DUI. While I was incarcerated, my ex-wife got custody of our two boys. So upon my release, I was broke, homeless, and alone. One month later, I undoubtedly made the worst decision of my life. I was walking down the street when a man who I did not know pulled up next to me and asked if I wanted a ride. Regrettably, I said yes. I never made it to where I was going, but instead, I found myself at a house in West Omaha where I tried methamphetamine for the first time. For the next seven years, that drug and my addiction to it took me to the depths of some of the darkest, most sinister places within this city and within myself. I was in and out of jail more times than I can remember. I hadn't seen or spoken to my two boys in almost a decade. I lost two girlfriends to an opioid overdose and one who was shot and killed in a drug-related incident. Toward the end of my addiction, I was living in a tent underneath the 84th Street Bridge, unable to quit using a drug that I had grown to hate. But then on March 24th, 2024, I was picked up by the Sarpy County Sheriff's Department on an outstanding Douglas County warrant. I'm glad that I was, because shortly thereafter, I was accepted into the RAP program at Douglas County Corrections, where I met some amazing people. Lynn Freysen and Vicky Myers were my instructors in the vicescos class. They gave me the tools I needed to confidently regain the life that I once had. Ms. Karen Shelton, my GED teacher, she had a major impact on not only my life, but on the lives of every student she came in contact with. She was patient, but she also pushed us to reach our full potential, a potential that we had forgot that we had. On May 8th, I was sworn into Douglas County Drug Court. I was assigned Ed Thiel as my case manager. He's been a real blessing. On May 9th, I started treatment at the Stevens Center. My youngest son reached out to me in June, and by the end of July, I graduated treatment and moved into an Oxford house. I started a full-time job, and in November, my oldest son came back into my life. It's hard to believe that just over a year ago, I was at a point in my life where "I love you, Dad" was something that I never thought I would hear again. But now, thanks to the RAP program, Douglas County Drug Court, the Stevens Center, and my parents who never gave up on me, I'm able to hear those words every day. Thank you.
I'm Jan Bowles. I'm going to try and follow that. As a mom, when John was little, I was able to fix anything that hurt him. When he called for mom, whatever the pain, I fixed it. Addiction doesn't work that way. Even though many nights I prayed, I begged, I pleaded, but nothing I could say or do brought him back to us, and God knows, we tried. Imagine had he not gone to jail, or had he gone to jail and there was no programs offered him, the story would be very different. But because of all of you facilitating funding and making these programs possible, and because of the folks that Jonathan already mentioned, we got our son back. Because when you're an addict, you don't walk the road alone. Your children come with you, your parents come with you, your old friends come with you, in various stages of grief. And if it wasn't for all of you that were mentioned here today, I'm quite confident my son would be dead or in prison, and I would still be grieving. That being said, this mama would like very much to thank you from the bottom of her heart for the programs that you funded, and to ask you, please keep funding them and expanding them if you can, because they work. Thank you.
Commissioners, I know I have more ground to cover. I don't know if you want to divert and have any commentary or questions for our guests before I continue.
Definitely, yeah. I just want to say thank you for being here, for sharing your story. What was your name again, sir? I'm sorry.
Jan Bowles.
Jan Bowles, okay. Thank you so much for sharing your story. It's really important for us to hear how the funding translates into programming, translates into changed lives and success stories, in which yours is a very powerful one. So thank you for sharing it. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you for this. And folks, come on up. This is really compelling, because we often ask for the results of the resources that we dedicate to these types of programs, and you're the living examples of that. So, thank you. And congratulations to both of you on the significant progress you've made. It's just amazing. It's truly almost miraculous. So, thanks for sharing with us today, and we appreciate your contribution to our community. You've made a complete 180 from being a consumer of tax dollars to now you're going to be productive members of our community, and that's a worthwhile investment. So, thanks for coming. We don't get enough of this, and both of you are shining examples of some of the success stories that we invest in. So, I just wanted to say thanks and congrats to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thanks again.
Mike, I have a quick question for you.
Yes, go ahead.
These folks are, you know, exactly what we were talking about when we talk about metrics, and this is, you know, living metrics of the success of this. This particular program, so folks know, has been running for how long?
We have had GED programming and other educational programming for longer than I've been working with the Department of Corrections.
The full array of these services?
No. We are very blessed to have the people working in this area that we have now, that they have, Heather and Karen have worked together to greatly expand our array of services over the past several years. Most of these partnerships are things that don't cost Douglas County. They are not on our budget. You know, there are partnerships that are offered at no cost.
Regarding that, because it's important for people to know what we invest, not today, but perhaps in your next report, you could give us an idea of two factors that spring to my mind. The actual county dollars involved in this initiative, okay? And the cost of housing a person in the Douglas County Correction Center for one year.
Absolutely.
The individual per capita cost if somebody's there for 365 days. Because, you know, recidivism is people coming back and duplicating that cost over and over and over again. This breaks that cycle, and we've got a couple of good examples here today. But I think it'd be important for folks to know, we invest this, but we get back this every time we help one of these people get back on their feet.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to finish out the report?
Yep.
Director Myers?
All right. We had 14 individuals referred to our Intensive Outpatient Treatment Programs, or IOP. Thirty-one individuals received substance use disorder evaluations. There were 272 individuals placed on pretrial release. Over the course of the month, 1,293 individuals were supervised on pretrial release. 541 of them participated in the 24/7 sobriety program. 187 individuals were supervised via GPS monitors, saving, in theory, 4,323 bed days in the jail, and that translates into a theoretical savings of $734,910 in detention costs. Pretrial services staff are working with a new vendor for pretrial release software that will be up and running within the next few months. We hope to provide much more detailed data to you and any other stakeholder in that endeavor regarding the many different measurables in that program that we currently have not been able to capture. Turning to enclosure number three, compliance. Regular reporting of all compliance data continues. Our next audit will be the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, which will occur, it has not yet been scheduled, but it'll be in the second half of this year. Enclosure number four, population. There were 1,460 admissions. That is a significant increase from the previous month, I believe close to 200 more than what we had previously. There were 1,383 releases. That is also a significant increase. Our high count in March was 1,055. Our low count was 980. Our average daily population was 1,012. That's a decrease of five. The average length of stay for inmates who were released in March, the overall average length of stay was 22.5 days. That is the lowest I have seen since we've been tracking this. And I believe that's because the following statistics were in play. Only 47.5% of inmates stayed longer than 72 hours, and their average length of stay was 46 days. 52.5% of inmates were released within 72 hours, and their length of stay average was 1.3 days. There were 136 custodial sanctioned bed days. The US Marshal population remained stable. The average daily felony pretrial population was 960. The average daily misdemeanor pretrial population was 131. Probation violations increased. 19% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. We are, as I mentioned last month, in the process of launching a program specifically for that age group. 66% of our population were minorities. 14% of our population were female, a little bit lower percentage than what we've seen typically. 20% of our population were homeless, nearly homeless, and that represents a gradual, gradually increasing trend over the past few months. Turning to enclosure number five, Medical and Mental Health. There were 1,167 intake screenings and 370 physical and health assessments. There were 17 emergent medical care transports. Six of those were by 911. There were seven hospital admissions that resulted in 29 combined days of hospitalization. There were 31 off-site specialty appointments. There were 126 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 315 initial mental health assessments. There were 107 suicide precautions. There were 205, that's a pretty high number, 205 individuals who were placed on drug and alcohol detox protocols. There were five approved referrals to the Board of Mental Health. There were currently 11 individuals on the waitlist for the Lincoln Regional Center. There were 13 individuals who were housed at the Lincoln Regional Center. 52.3%, the highest number that I think I've reported to you, percent of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness. There were five individuals who were administered Narcan, and a total of 16 doses were administered among those five. Enclosure number six, Security Operations and Honor Guard. Our Crisis Negotiation Team, or CNT, was deployed four times in March. Issues addressed, working with individuals who had been refusing basic hygienic care to take showers and negotiating with an individual who was refusing to leave for an off-site medical appointment. Each of these deployments were in conjunction with CERT, or Emergency Response Team, which our CERT team completed riot response training in March. We also added three new team members to our CERT team who completed the CERT Training Academy in Lincoln. CERT was deployed 15 times during March. Four of these were in conjunctions with CNT. Among them were controlling a volatile individual who was gauging in self-harm by wounding himself by scratching and tearing flesh from his arms. CERT members controlled the individual, so treatment of his wounds could be rendered. One CERT member sustained a minor injury when encountering a volatile individual who was medically mandated to shower. One inmate sustained a minor injury on another occasion when force was necessary to complete a medically mandated shower. There were 11 searches conducted. Minor contraband included social media usernames and passwords, tampered batteries and headphones. Significant contraband included cash app information, which is used for transferring money outside of the jail. Marijuana was concealed inside of a shoe, a nasal spray bottle that actually contained liquid K-2, papers suspected to be contaminated with K-2, and a rock-like substance which was being submitted for testing. Our Honor Guard conducted quarterly training in March. Turning to enclosure number seven, Staff Development, Wellness, and Retention. Forty-six individuals were interviewed for correctional officer positions. 117 applications were received. As I mentioned before, 26 cadets are expected and did actually begin our academy class, which started yesterday. We are currently investigating a new online learning management system, as well as a new self-defense and use of force training curriculum. Ten staff members utilized the wellness and retention office. Work is beginning to plan a Corrections Wellness Fair for our staff later this year. Other noteworthy items, we welcomed nationally-known comedian and recovery advocate Mark Lundholm to the Department of Corrections on March 20th, when he was in town to perform at Funny Bone. Mark brought a meaningful and touching message to well over 100 incarcerated individuals, speaking for approximately three hours to three different groups of individuals in the jail and community corrections. His insightful message to addiction, trauma, and recovery was infused with humor that had his audience laughing out loud, but also in tears, as his interactions resonated with those who've had their lives shaped by victimization, trauma, and addiction. I want to thank Mark for being so generous with his time, and we hope to have him back whenever he travels to perform in Omaha. With that, I am ready for your questions.
Thank you. Director Myers, we'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Myers, I wanted to go real quick under enclosure six and the searches. There were 11 searches conducted, a minor contraband grabbed or identified. Marijuana, for example, in a shoe, a nasal spray bottle containing K-2. K-2 is a designer, it's my understanding, a designer drug. It's synthetic. It's a cannabis sort of option or something. I hate to, this isn't a prediction. What happens, what would happen when you're doing this? How do you identify fentanyl right now? You have to wait till, wait till somebody's infected, essentially?
Well, you know, fentanyl is very difficult to identify, because, you know, we have intelligence from law enforcement as to what the substances are moving through the community look like, and so if we see something familiar, we'll do that. We'll base it on that, but you have to treat that substance in particular, and now, you know, there is an announcement by law enforcement that car fentanyl, which is 100 times more potent than fentanyl, as if we needed that, has been found in our community as well. Those substances are, you know, we treat those with extreme caution, and we would have to send those out to be identified by a lab outside of our department. You can't, drug dogs can't sniff for them. They don't teach drug dogs to sniff for fentanyl, because it would be lethal to to the dogs, and, and so it is a big challenge.
Okay, so that, for example, final, final thing. For example, that, that nasal spray bottle that came through, if you had, there's other jurisdictions that are, that are, that are trying to track fentanyl coming into facilities. What if it's in a nasal spray bottle like that? Are we getting, are we getting too down in the weeds here? They open it up, or is it, or is it identified when it comes through screening, and then you say, stop that, get it, get it out of there? I mean, is the technology available to actually track it before someone touches it?
There is technology available. We don't own it yet, but there is technology available to identify substances. One of the things that is kind of, that I have a keen interest in is there is sort of, I'll call it, an electronic drug sniffing device, so that it can identify substances without risk to the individual handling the, or, or, and in some cases, a dog handling the, the substance itself.
Okay. Mr. Chair, that's all I had. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks for this, Mike. The usual metrics that we always talk about in terms of average daily population, I think you said it was one thousand twelve?
Correct.
Which is about what we had before.
Yeah, pretty much unchanged from the previous month.
Make-up, racial make-up in the population, sixty-six percent minority, majority, again, in the ballpark that we've been in for some time.
That's correct.
Twenty percent of those folks, you say, are homeless or nearly homeless?
That's correct.
How do we determine that? They just don't have an address when they show up?
Well, so either we, that is done by either, if they, if they list a homeless shelter as their address, seventeen oh-two Nicholas is a common address for the Sienna Francis house. We also ask them if they, if they do have a place. A lot of our folks, unfortunately, are living week to week with their finances, and so the nearly homeless portion of that is if you stay in jail for more than, you know, a few days, are you going to have a place? And that, that creates the nearly homeless category.
We talked before about, on these categories where we have exception time, vacation, comp, sick leave, FMLA. We talked about out-of-duty time, you know, people are taken out for training or any other purpose, maybe adding that here. I see there's a light duty thing. Is that the same thing as out of?
No, those are people who have suffered an injury, and so they are put in specific-
Could we add a out-of-service?
Yeah, the training, yeah.
Give us some idea. The personnel seems to have stabilized at a very good ninety-nine percent, which is great considering we've struggled with that over time. But we have ninety-nine percent overall, and then we have ninety-nine percent among our mainline correction officers, which is excellent, and I commend you for that. The folks that we heard from this morning are good examples of how some of these programs that were funding help us break the cycle of people coming back, which is, I know we struggle with this number, but recidivism, people returning, is a high number.
Higher than we would prefer, yes.
Yeah. I don't know if there's an actual percentage of that thousand people contain three hundred people who have been here before. Do you know?
So what I can tell you, I, I would need to do a little research, Commissioner, because my, my, the last time we looked at this was a little while ago. And what I can tell you is, though, what's important is that there is a significant difference in the recidivism rate among people who participate in programs like you heard about today and those who don't.
I appreciate that. I'm just looking for the overall.
The overall. I will, I will prepare something for that for next month.
I think if we can determine where people live or don't live, we can determine whether not people have been here before, pretty easily.
Correct.
That's a big number, because it goes to this, it costs us so much per day, and there are three hundred and sixty-five days in a year, and there are a thousand people under our care. Do the math. If we break one or ten or a hundred of these people out of that cycle, it's real money.
It absolutely is.
Real savings to the taxpayers of Douglas County, and good for the community, because these people become productive citizens.
Absolutely.
I'll come back.
Thank you. You want to go around, Commissioner?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. This is a third, two-minute round.
The programs that we are talking about in here are, some of them dedicated to education, but there are also some dedicated to drug and alcohol abuse, which is a big factor in the, you know, thousand-person population. I would, I would hazard a guess that you probably run close to fifty percent of people with drug and alcohol abuse issues.
That's probably, that's a little harder number to diagnose, because diagnosing it takes a little more, it takes more resources, I guess. But it is highly common. I'll leave it at that.
Sure. And, you know, you can certainly get a hard number, just the number of people there for DUIs, the people there for possession of controlled substances. And related crimes. You know, you're going to be in the hundreds in-
Absolutely.
A regular day. That said, we do offer some substance abuse, well, drug and alcohol detox. That's on the admission side.
Correct.
And then some programs while folks are in custody.
Correct. We have two, they're actually operated by the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center in partnership with us. There's an intensive outpatient treatment program in community corrections that we've had for probably approaching a decade now, and we replicated that in the jail. I think that started actually about thirteen months ago. And so, yes, we do have opportunities for intense treatment. Those are both close to a hundred-hour programs to complete.
Sure. On page twenty-two, we have mental health, and these are people who've no progress, partially completed or completed our programs, and that number is thirty-three. But substance abuse, the same categories, no progress, partially completed, completed, we only have twenty. And we'll come back to this at another time, but it's something that we might want to pay a, a little more attention to. Do I have a third go around?
That was your third, yeah.
Oh, that was third.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments on the report today? If not, we'll conclude. Thank you, Director Myers.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I'll take a motion for adjournment. Motion by Morgan, second by Friend.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump into the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borges is absent. Mr. Kavanaugh. Commissioner Pehey. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items, section one, A and B. First being the approval of the minutes. The Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty-five, and B being the approval of the claim submitted for payment process through Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion, a second for both? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, items A through I. Do I have a motion, a second for discussion? Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Comments, questions on consent agenda? If none, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump to section seven, public hearings. We have three. First, item A, public hearing and resolution appointing the trustees of Hospital Authority Number Three of Douglas County, Nebraska, in response to a petition of electors. And I will now open the public hearing for this item. Was there anybody that wanted to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, my name's Joel Vanderveen with the Q-TAC Rock Law Firm, here in our capacity as bond counsel to the Nebraska Methodist Health System. I would note that this is the public hearing regarding the appointment of five trustees to serve as the board for Hospital Authority Number Three of Douglas County. Also in the room today are Josie Abud, Executive Vice President of the Health System, along with Jeff Francis, the CFO, and Mark Johnson, who's counsel to the Hospital Authority. Just real briefly, in the nineteen seventies, there were three hospital authorities organized in Douglas County, as you may know pursuant to the Hospital Authorities Act. Their boards consist of between five and eleven members. They serve six-year terms, and the function of the hospital authorities is to serve as conduit governmental bond issuers for healthcare facilities within their territory. They are set up on a territorial basis, so the county is divided up into two, three of those territories, thus the three hospital authorities. The hearing today is pursuant to notice published as required by the Hospital Authority Act. There are five candidates. They were selected with the assistance of Nebraska Methodist Health System and their management and employees. They've met with Mr. Johnson, and I'd just say that we very much appreciate their willingness to serve. It's an all-volunteer commitment, of course, and is, they do a great service for the health facilities. Traditionally, Hospital Authority Number Three's borrower, bond issuer, has been the Nebraska Methodist Health System, and, and so we expect that likely to be the case, that they'll continue to be a borrower for that authority going forward. We might talk on the, the next agenda item about potential plans for, for the health system to issue bonds, hopefully this year. So with that, I don't have any particular comment on, on the candidates themselves, but invite questions of those who are here, and just ask that you consider the approval resolution.
Thank you for being here, and for that context, I will go to Commissioner Kavanaugh first.
Thank you, and thanks for this information. I had an inquiry from a constituent who had examined this item on the agenda, and his question related to the geographical area of this authority, particularly in line of the fact that it appears that the nominees are all from a particular area in Douglas County, a western area of Douglas County. And so I wanted to have you address that particular point.
Sure.
Why that is the case.
Sure. The, as I mentioned, the, the hospital authorities are set up on a territorial basis, and Hospital Authority Number Three is approximately the, the territory of the county north of Dodge Street and West Dodge Road, running out to the, to the county line on the, on the, on the west, and approximately west of One Hundred and Twentieth Street, with some irregularity in, in the boundaries on, on the east side. But, and so it's that territory, the board members are required to be resident in the territory of the hospital authority, and so that's, that's the area of, of the county they're from.
And that's a statutory requirement for serving as a board member?
Yes.
Okay. As far as the selection of the actual people, and I realize they're volunteers, and we commend their civic-mindedness for stepping forward, how are they actually selected, recruited, however we find them?
They are, were identified as willing to serve by employees at, at the Nebraska Methodist Health System. And again, because that's the primary beneficiary of this hospital authority historically, it made sense that, that they wanted to make that effort. They were, they were nominated pursuant to petitions. Around fifty signatures were gathered from electors within the hospital authority. The statutory requirement is, is that there be twenty-five valid signatures. Those have been confirmed, and there were well in excess of, of twenty-five valid signatures.
I saw that, the signatures are attached here. Who actually goes out and gets the signatures?
In this case, it was employees and acquaintances of the Nebraska Methodist Health System, along with, with assistance from, from myself and, and Mark Johnson.
The last question from my constituent was relative to party affiliation. I don't think that plays any part in this, does it? Whether you're Democrat, Republican, or Independent, that's not part of the qualification?
It does not, and I wouldn't be able to tell you party affiliations.
No, I, I didn't think that it did. It is not part of the qualification for, for this office. As far as I can see, you're a registered voter in Douglas County. You live in the area that is designated by statute. Those are pretty much the qualifications, aren't they?
Yes. The, the statute, if I can refer to it for a moment, does talk about qualities that would be useful for, for board members, and refers to experience in such areas as education, medicine, hospital administration, business management, finance, law, engineering, and other fields that might be of benefit to the authority, a background in public service activities, the amount of time and energy that, that he or she might be expected to devote to the affairs of the authority, and any other factors the county board might deem relevant.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item during the public hearing? If not, oh, yeah, sorry, Mr. Clerk.
Dan, I'm Douglas County Clerk. Well, we, we've kind of touched on this email, but I did want to note for the record, we did receive an email in opposition from Ricky Fulton at four-ten South Eighty-Second Street. But then I also just wanted to thank Joel and Robert Severson, Mark Johnson, and Don Roth for all their help on this. These hospital authority items come around not very often, and, but they pretty much just do all the work, and I really appreciate you making it very easy on the clerk's office. So thank, and I'll make the same note for the next item as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Otherwise, I will now close the public hearing on item A. What is the will of the board? Motion approved by Rogers, second by Morgan.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll now go to item B, a public hearing and resolution providing public approval for issuance of revenue bonds for, excuse me, by Hospital Authority Number Two of Douglas County, Nebraska, and Hospital Authority Number Three of Douglas County, Nebraska, for Nebraska Methodist Health System Incorporated, the Nebraska Methodist Hospital Physicians Clinic Incorporated and/or Nebraska Methodist College of Nursing and Allied Health. I will now open the public hearing for this item. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So this is a public hearing required by section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code in order for bonds to be issued by Hospital Authority Number Two and Number Three for the benefit of the Nebraska Methodist Health System, the Nebraska Methodist Hospital Physicians Clinic, and the Methodist College of Nursing as borrowers. The point of, of the hearing and the procedure is so that those bonds can be tax-exempt under the, the Internal Revenue Code. And again, notice was published as required by the code prior to this hearing, and the bonds to be issued by Hospital Authority Number Two would be in an amount not to exceed one hundred and five million, and by Hospital Authority Number Three, an amount to, not to exceed two hundred and forty-five million. And again, Ms. Abud and Mr. Francis are here. If there are particular questions regarding the project, the- If there are particular questions regarding the project, the project being approved is for hospital and healthcare and related facilities at the addresses set out in the notice concentrated at the hospital's main facilities, including at 80, the Nebraska Methodist Hospital at 84th and Dodge, and the Women's Hospital on West Dodge.
Thank you, sir.
Answer any questions.
We'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. We have these from time to time, and we like to make a record for the public that this does not involve any of the good faith or credit of Douglas County.
Thank you. I, I was remiss in not pointing that out. Yes, this does not involve an obligation payment or otherwise of Douglas County. The hospital authorities are, are what we think of as pure conduit issuers in that they serve as the government, governmental issuer so that the bonds can be tax-exempt. But the payment obligation is all with the Nebraska Methodist Health System and the obligated group of related entities at the health system.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing. Or did you have something, Mr. Clerk?
No, just same note as last time. Thank you for, Joel and his team for all their work on the item.
Thank you.
Very good. I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the Board? Motion approved by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote. Oh, Larry, did you have something on this? Okay, thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. There's one more public hearing item, Item C, an application from Samantha Burke for a special use permit for a U-PIC flower farm located at 1405 South 261st, Section 29, Township 15, Range 10, parcel ID, as listed on the final agenda. Very specific address there. All right, I will open the public hearing for this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Dietrich, Planning and Zoning Coordinator. Samantha Burke is the owner of Burke Fields, a U-PIC flower farm. The U-PIC aspect of it falls under agrotourism, which requires a special use permit. Planning Commission heard this at their March 26 meeting and recommended approval based on the following conditions. I'll read those. Seasonal operation from April to October, Saturday, Sunday hours, 8:00 a.m. to noon. Four workshops per month, 6:00 to 9:30 p.m. All parking is off-street. She can amend this special use permit following the same special use permit process, and the business plan submitted by Samantha Burke is part of the conditions of the special use permit, permit, excuse me. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any comments or questions on this item? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, I think the petitioner is here. Is that right?
She is. Samantha Burke is here.
I just have a question about the U-PIC flowers concept. That sounds kind of interesting. Could you tell us about that?
Yeah, so I grow perennials and annual flowers that are, they're specialty-
I'm sorry, could you please say your name for the record, please?
Oh, Samantha Burke.
Thank you.
They're specialty flowers made just for making flower bouquets. And so, what we do in U-PICs is I'll grow the flowers and then allow members of the community to come out, and I provide like a vase or a vessel, and then snips, and you can walk around in the, in the rows and pick your own flowers and make your own bouquets. And then we have workshops as well where I can assist with assembling the bouquets, so then you have a beautiful bouquet to take home. And then we're also partnering, partnering with other members of the community. Last year before, I realized that I didn't have a special use permit to do this. We had a yoga event, and so we picked flowers and arranged them, and then afterwards, somebody came out and we had yoga mats and we did yoga out between the flowers.
That's very cool.
Yeah.
So I can come out and pick flowers and make a bouquet to take home. And is there a charge for this?
Yes, there is.
Do you have a site online where we could go and check it out?
I do. It's Burke Fields, www.burkefields.com.
And is this a startup? You're just starting this?
This is my fourth year, going into my fourth year. Last year I tried to do the U-PICs, and then it was brought to my attention that I needed to go through this process, so we had to stop it. But I also sell memberships where I sell already wrapped bouquets to members. And you can sign up for bi-weekly and weekly options, and they come to my home to pick it up, which is not at the same location.
And, and this flower garden is at 1405 South 261st Street?
Yes.
Do you live there as well?
Not yet.
How big is it?
So we purchased, it's just shy of nine acres. It's like 8.76, and the flower farm is located on about an acre of those nine acres.
That's a lot of flowers.
It is. Well, we also have pumpkins, but.
Thank you. This is great.
Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Samantha, you're more than welcome to put a 10% premium charge on Commissioner Kavanaugh when he comes out. I, you have my permission.
Thank you.
Charge him more. Thanks. Okay, thanks for, thanks for everything you're doing. This is pretty cool.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the Board? Motion to approve by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go into our committee, Section Eight. Under Finance, we have the Budget Report as Presented. Under Child and Youth Services, we have one presentation, which is the Douglas County Youth Center Monthly Report for March 2025.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dr. Abbie Carbaugh. I am going to give the data presentation, and then Superintendent Woodard from DCYC is here to answer any questions you may have. So the presentation this morning will be talking about our population from last month in March of 2025. This first graphic shows our weekly average daily population by court type since January of 2023. So in December of 2024, toward, toward the mid-month, you can see that gray line increases. That is our population of youth who are charged as adults. We went from about 34 youth in mid-December to 43 by the middle of January. So for our youth who are in detention charged as adults, that population group has remained about 44 youth since the middle of January. That has resulted in the majority of our detention population on an average daily population basis being comprised of youth who are charged as adults. For youth in the juvenile court system, we've decreased from about 50 in mid-December of 2024 down to 40 by the end of March 2025. Looking at our monthly summary for March, we had a low of 85 and a high population of 91, which gave us an average daily population of about 87. On March 1st, our snapshot population was 90, and we had 91 youth in detention on March 31st. During the month of March, 11 youth were screened by our home program. Seven of those referrals came from probation, and four came from the court. And seven of those 11 youth were accepted onto home program supervision. We also had 28 releases during the month. On average, it took about 74 days from the time a youth was admitted until the time they were released. Five of these youth were in adult court, and their average days to release was 209. We had 10 youth who were on juvenile court charges in a predisposition status. They stayed with us about 58 days. Three youth were admitted on probation with new charges and released after 62 days. And nine youth were originally admitted on probation without new charges, so these would be our loss of placement or other violations. They stayed with us about 29 days before moving on to another setting. And then we had one youth from another jurisdiction who stayed with us for four days. When looking at the monthly admissions, again, this chart goes back to January of 2023. We had a relatively stable admissions in 2024. There was a lot less ups and downs than we saw during 2023. We decreased between December, between November and December of 2024, so we went from 63 in November down to 47 in December. We went back up in January of this year to 66, and then we've had some relatively lower admission numbers over the last two months. We were at 46 in February and 47 in March. So we will continue to monitor this, the admission trends over the next few months, and see if we are going to sort of return to the ups and downs we saw in 2023, or if we'll sort of stable out like we saw last year. With regard to those 47 youth who were admitted last month, five came in on adult court charges, 41 came in on juvenile court charges, and one came in from another county. Of the 41 juvenile court youth, 23 were on predisposition charges, four received new charges while they were on probation, and 14 were admitted for reasons other than new charges that they received while on probation. These youth were admitted, eight were admitted for weapons-related offenses. 21 were related for, were admitted for technical violations or reasons other than a new law violation. 13 had other types of felonies, and four had non-weapon misdemeanors. Our eight youth admitted for weapons-related offenses. Again, we had one in adult court, two who received those charges while on probation supervision, and four who were in a predisposition status. The types of weapons, we had one weapon use, and then the other seven were related to firearms, so five firearm possession and two firearm use. We do break these down into whether they are felony or misdemeanor-level offenses. So six of our firearms were felony, felony-level, four were possession, and two were felony firearm use. The felony weapon, the weapon offense was a felony, and it was a weapon use. And then we had one misdemeanor firearm possession. As you can see, these weapons-related offenses were not the only, not the only offenses for which these youth came into detention. We have any other, under, other underlying charges listed on this slide for you as well. For the 13 youth who committed other non-weapon-related felonies, one was in adult court and 12 were admitted in juvenile court. The types of felonies for which these youth were admitted include assault, sexual assault, burglary, drug possession and delivery, and theft. For the non-weapon-related misdemeanors, all four of these youth were admitted in juvenile court. Three were admitted for assault, and one was admitted on an obstruction charge. And then finally, with regard to the youth admitted for technical violations or admitted without new law violations, two of these youth came from adult court, and 19 were admitted in the juvenile justice system. Five were on predisposition charges, and 14 were already on probation. The reasons for their admission, eight were, were admitted for an unlawful absence, and seven were admitted on violations of their current probation. Three had failures to appear, two were admitted for fines and costs, and one had a violation of the home program. Again, we have a variety of underlying felony and misdemeanor charges for these youth. For the felony underlying charges, those include assault, criminal impersonation, theft, animal cruelty, and unlawful occupancy. With regard to the misdemeanors, again, we have a mix of some interpersonal and non-personal offenses, including assault, theft, obstruction, providing false information, unauthorized use of a propelled vehicle, disorderly conduct, and trespassing. As of last Monday, we had 93 youth in detention. Four of those youth were from Sarpy County, two were being held on adult charges, and two were being held on charges in juvenile court. 42 youth were, were in detention for adult court matters, and 47 were in for juvenile court matters. Of those 47 juvenile court youth, about one-third were on a predisposition status, and about two-thirds were already on probation when they came into detention. With regard to the demographics, our overall population in detention is about 87% youth of color, 92% male, and 9% of our population were also involved with the state system as state wards. And then finally, as of last Friday, we had 11 youth who were in DCYC who had court orders authorizing their release once an appropriate placement was found. On average, these 11 youth had been waiting 16 days from the time the court issued their order. There's a variety of placement types for which these youth were waiting. One included a transfer to NCYF. We also had youth waiting for foster care placements, shelters, group homes, PRTFs, and the YRTC transfers. Again, you can also see the underlying charges that these youth have, a variety of felony and misdemeanor-related offenses. So that is our data for this month, and we'll open it up for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Carbaugh. Appreciate it. So we'll jump into discussion with the focus being the detention numbers at the current youth center. We will start with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Doctor, I just have a quick question. So the latest we have from April 7th is 93 children.
Correct.
Okay. And they're all held at the Douglas County Youth Center on 42nd Street, right?
Correct.
The newly constructed kids jail across the street has a population of?
64 beds, but no population, no youth are there.
Zero.
Correct.
Okay. And that's been consistent since its opening?
Correct.
We have 64 beds capacity over there, probably a little lower if you break into the gender thing. And so, we're dealing with an average daily population of 87 currently, right?
Correct.
And that seems to be pretty static over the last couple, three years, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Woodard, I, I have some questions for you. We appreciate what you're doing, and under the circumstances, I think you're doing a, a, a great job. We have been in discussions about doing some upgrade and refurbishment of the Douglas County Youth Center. And I was just wondering if you have any new information on, on where that stands?
Actually, tomorrow morning, Jeff McGill and his crew will be back out. We need to walk through the facility again to make sure that we have all our numbers correct and are addressing the right things that we'd like to address, so we have it prioritized correctly for you guys, so we could submit it to you.
Right. I think it's a big problem for us in that, you know, obviously, from my last walkthrough, and I think other commissioners have done the same. The need there is urgent and apparent, and yet, you know, we don't have any solution in play. And this isn't on you. I know that you're aware of it, and you've developed ideas on how we can improve that. At the same time, we're dealing with an empty building across the street, which is brand-new, and serves no children, and has been costing us, to date, tens of millions of dollars. So I would be very interested in, you know, trying to, I guess, maybe speed up what we can do at the youth center on 42nd Street for the existing population, which seems to hover around 90 of the children that we have there. Particularly with, you know, summertime coming on, I know that we had heating conditions, situations in the wintertime that were problematic. Summertime coming on, we're going to have cooling, and those are air conditioning issues that are problematic. Are we set for that, just anticipating that there's going to be some heat issues going forward?
Yeah, I think we're fine when it comes to those things.
Okay, very good. The ability of the children to be outdoors is limited currently at the 42nd Street facility. Is that right?
Well, they have outdoor recreation areas on each unit in the facility. 10 of the units, the, the outdoor recreation area is, is covered, but that allows them to use it all the time. So there's pros and cons to being able to go outside into the open air, because sometimes that's limited based on the temperature and, you know, if it's raining or anything like that. So, you know, the kids enjoy being able to go straight from the living area out to the outdoor recreation. out to the outdoor recreation area at the current facility.
And we just recently enhanced the pay for the teachers there at the youth center. I think we approved that maybe last week. The ability to have these children have uninterrupted education?
That hasn't been approved yet. I think that goes on.
It's under consideration.
Yes, yes.
That's time. Do you want a second round, Commissioner?
If I could, please. Are we currently fully staffed with teachers?
No, we're short currently three teachers.
Okay, so the sooner we can get this pay package through, the better in terms of recruiting people?
Yes.
Right. Thank you very much. You do a good job. Your people are excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the presentation today? Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Abby, can you come up? Can you show page 10?
Did you say 10?
Yes.
Correct.
So I just want to make note for the record, I mean, the comparison is being made to the new building. And I think if you note your number, you have the 42 that are on adult charges. Those are kids that are on, and you and Rondi can correct me if I'm fair on that. The 42 on adult charges are there that have done a really serious offense that are waiting there to go to East Omaha, if I'm right.
Yes.
Okay. So you take the other 47 with your own juvenile charges, 16 on disposition, 31 on probation. 31 on probation, when you've got new charges and other things like that. The state statute said that a kid sitting in detention on probation should not be sitting in probation for lack of placement. And because that kid is on probation, they've been adjudicated and they're either waiting for a placement or they should be going somewhere. So for the record, when it's stated and compared that the new facility is 64 beds and that number is 90, actually probably the 42 should be there for sure, and you may have a few of the 47. So when this is stated as if that's, you know, where we are, that when it's stated and those numbers are compared and not broken down and explained, that is an unfair comparison and actually an inaccurate description. And so what I want to say on that piece to add on that is, so it's stated that the building's costing tens of million dollars a year. No, that's that's not the case. It may be up a little bit now, but every day that building stays vacant, it's $600,000 a year. That's my number that I that I got this roughly. That's just the operator to go over. Rondi, if you go over there, turn on the water, do whatever you want to do. Now, is there some maintenance that probably needs to be done on the new building? Probably, yeah. But, I mean, on the old building, yes, you have to, but the fact is, discussion needs to be had of. Depending on what that number, that amount of money is that you put into the old building, that 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 is a discussion that I think needs to be had because the fact is, I don't know if that's an adequate use of money. Because that move can be made. There are statements that have been made about the fact that we don't control anything in that respect, and that is totally wrong. We control by law the the capacity or the housing. And that is the whole board's control of what we can do, and there are some changes that can be made in regards to predisposition and services that have been debated for a while. But if the board was to make that decision and we make that move, things would have to accommodate and go to that degree to make programs and everything adjust. So I just wanted to talk in that respects on those numbers and say that where everything is, is of course, when we come every month, talks about the lack of stays and the other appropriate things that need to be done to try to reduce those lack of stays. It looks like the numbers have done better this month on some of those probation kids, but you still have those extended length of stays. And that is where the appropriate attention should be going to make a move and progress happen in that respect. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to a third round, two-minute round for Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I'd just like to note the minority, majority of the youth center is 87% children of color, whereas in the correction center, it's 66% of adults of color. Both way out of whack with the demographics of our community. We're locking up way, way more children of color than we are the majority Caucasian children in our community. Neither one should be something that we're proud of. And neither should the fact be that we have an empty building that costs us tens of millions of dollars. And Commissioner Rogers knows what it costs because he voted for it. He advocated it. It's been empty since the day it was completed, and it remains empty. He seems to be advocating the opening of two youth centers now, one downtown and one at 42nd Street, which would cost you about twice to run what the one at 42nd Street runs, which is ample capacity for all of the 90 roughly children that we have per month. This just goes on and on and on, where it's not recognized by the people who advocated for the kids' jail, that all that money's been wasted and no children have been helped. And it is tens of millions of dollars and ongoing. The construction costs and the maintenance costs are ongoing. We're paying for them right now. And that money could have been used on 42nd Street to improve the facility where we do hold children each and every day. And that's a scandal. That's a fiasco. And the fact that you want to spin it with this population of children or that population of children doesn't make up for the fact that it's an empty, brand-new building that you paid for and no children are being helped by that expenditure. So I don't know how long it's going to take people to realize the people on this board who supported that, that it was a waste of money. But opening up two youth facilities at twice the cost where we have capacity at 42nd Street is just wasting more money.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, let the record show. I am I am wholeheartedly against opening one facility, moving the kids in the old facility to the new facility, and beginning the repurposing of the old facility for a next degree of service. So let that be clear on the record. I am absolutely not. And to the point of, in regards to the position of it not being open, let the record show that you were one of the people that voted for the plan to stop progress to open the facility and make the other people in the system accountable for the progress to make this thing move. At one point, we were on point to open that building when the numbers were way lower than that. And you're on you're on record for supporting to stop that. The issue right now in this system, which, you know, is taught, well, you know, we're quick to talk about accountability, is that we're not holding everybody in the system accountable for their part in the system. Some of that is us with the predisposition numbers, and we can make a few tweaks to get that. But I go back to the statement that was made in respects to saying that we don't have any say in this. Absolutely not. When the decision was made a couple of years ago, we were on point at a trajectory where we gave the state a timeline to move those numbers down, where we can move into the building and everything was on progress, and the state was asking what could they do to meet that goal? And they knew it was on their dime to do that. But the the choice was made not to do that, and as a result, we are at the position where you don't have one building open. But be clear, my position is to move the kids that need to be moved into the old building to give that a timeline. That choice can be made and that transition can happen probably within three to six months. And when that is made, that will put the state on notice that they need to make accommodations for the programming and other things for those kids. Once that transition happens, then that opens us up to invest long-term in that building and provide services to the next level of services to kids that need to be there. So be clear that that's where my position is, and that's where I'm standing and have always stood in respects to making sure that services are provided to those kids and families that are adequate and appropriate and put them in a better position. The job that's done down in DCYC is good for what that job is, and that job is supposed to be a holding facility for people to transfer. But as the numbers say, and as it sports saying says, the tape don't lie. And the tape right in front of us are the numbers and the data that says you got these extended length of stays with kids for adults, that's a court matter and a process matter. And then you've got the extended length of stays for kids on probation. And that is clearly a matter for the state's role in the program to make sure those services are adequate. And the 16 kids on predisposition are ours, which we have the capacity right now to make alternatives and changes to make sure that we can find places for little kids. So that's where I stand on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And for everyone's information, there will be a committee meeting in May for Child Youth Services that will discuss all options on the table, all options that are being brought up in regards to the to both facilities so that we can have that robust discussion in public. Larry, and then, sorry, Commissioner Morgan, and then Larry?
I was just going to ask you, do you have the date of the May 1 yet?
Yes. Kim, do you recall by hand, I know, May 8?
Yeah. It's May 8.
Yep. May 8 at 10:00 AM here in the Civic Center. Yep. Was that your, anything else?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Larry?
Larry Stewart, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I've been coming to these for quite a few years. I go back to the Sunshine Project and the beginnings of the youth center downtown and the hot air and the BS that we've had to listen to all these years. I'd like to add, first of all, that, Mr. Rogers, I cannot hear what you say. I can hear everything everybody else says. So please repeat your testimony at the microphone and speak into it. This gentleman, I, he, he's a good operator, but I did notice that when Mr. Kavanaugh was speaking, he pushed the button so that we could hear him, but not for you. So I'd like to hear what you actually said because I could not understand it. I disagree with it. I tend to side with Mr. Kavanaugh, and I don't think there's enough transparency on the topic for the citizens. I can't hold you all responsible because you're not all my commissioner. And holding you responsible at the voting booth is not necessarily practical in this situation. That's what county boards are for, according to the founders of this country. This is where the concept of federalism breaks down so that the local government is responsible to us. We have sovereignty over you, not the other way around. So yes, have your long discussion over the next few years about this, but be honest about it and stop throwing money away on things that do not work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item? If not, we'll conclude. Thank you, Dr. Carbal, Director Woodard, there you go, Rondi, thank you. Appreciate it. We're going to go ahead and move forward here. Under Human Resources, we have Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented. We do have a need for executive session today for the purposes of litigation, labor negotiations, personnel, and legal advice. Though let me briefly note that we do not have a meeting next week due to the Easter holiday weekend. So we will come back as a board on Tuesday, April 29th, 2025. With that, do I have a motion second for executive session? Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. The board will now go into executive session for the purpose of litigation, labor negotiations, personnel, and legal advice.
Recording.
Uh, yes. I don't know. Do you know?
I'm operating back.
Help me.
Mr. Cannon, I vote yes.
Yes, Captain, yes, sir. Yeah, buddy. Yeah, yeah. She said yes.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers to reconvene and adjourn, second by Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes six to zero. We are adjourned at eleven twenty-six AM.